All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 6:30. And as the vice chairperson presiding over this July 20th, 2022 school board meeting, I determined that an emergency exists necessitating the acceptance of remote attendance to form a quorum of this board. Immediate action is needed to approve the policies for inclusion in the student parent handbook, the student parent handbook itself, and the Primate cap agreements. This is imperative in that the student parent handbook is due to the designer printers in order for publication and delivery prior to the first day of the 2022-2023 school year, and the Primate cap agreements are due to Primate no later than tomorrow, July 21st, 2022. I am zooming from home, and other than my dog, I am home alone. And the first order of business is approval of the minutes from June 22nd. Does anybody have any comments or corrections? Then I will entertain a motion to approve the June 22nd meetings, that's meeting minutes as presented. Thank you, Brian, thank you, Joe. I'm gonna do a roll call vote because I am remote. All in favor, Joe? Ashley?
Hi.
Brian? I am I as well. And then we have the non-public meeting minutes of June 22nd, 2022. I'll make a motion to approve those. I'll entertain a motion to approve those. Thank you, Brian, second, anyone? No, thank you. All in favor, Joe? Ashley? Brian? I am an I as well. Is there any correspondence, Judith?
No, there is none.
There's none, perfect. Business administrators' report, Debbie?
Okay, I just have a few things. First of all, it is a very busy time of year. We've been processing a lot of orders. That means that now a lot of invoices are coming in and payments are due. You'll see in the hallways, a lot of stuff waiting to go in the classroom, so everyone's very busy, we see in that ad. Sharon's been really busy with the end of the year reports to the state, which is all the student information data. So again, it's a pretty busy time of year. In your packet is information regarding HB 1221, and this is that one-time New Hampshire Retirement Employer Contribution reimbursement that will be sent to towns and schools, and they're anticipating in October 2022. And it's based on the actual payroll data from the fiscal year that we just ended, June 30th. So New Hampshire Retirement is currently working on the final fiscal year 2022 employer-by-employer contribution data, and that should be provided to the state by October, and then the state will reimburse eligible employers directly. For school groups, it's gonna be calculated for the Group One teachers. The Group One group includes the teacher group and includes the employee group. I think for towns, I think they're reimbursing police and fire. Town groups are Group Two, and it's police and fire, and then all the other town employees. Anyway, so we'll see what that brings us in October. I think if they're trying to get it done by tax rate setting time to help with reduction of tax rates, but we'll see what happens there. And New Hampshire Retirement recently sent out the employer contribution rates for the next two upcoming years, effective July 1st, 2023, to June 30th, 2025. And the new rate will be incorporated into our budget process beginning in October for the 23-24 school year. The employer rate for teachers is going down by 1.38%, and for all other eligible school employees group, the employer rate is going down by 0.53%. And doesn't sound like a lot, but the fact that it's going down instead of going up is this rate. And NHRS is funded by employees who pay 7% of their wages, and then the employer contributions for the different groups, and those, again, change every two years. Okay, so there's one other thing I just want to bring up, manifests. Just been struggling with that because for our policies, we need to have two signatures to send out the payments. And then, and then we'll get the rest of the signatures that we have to have on file for audit purposes, Academy. We have to have the majority of the board sign the manifest. We run payroll checks bi-weekly and accounts payable checks on the opposite weeks of payroll. So that means we have weekly manifests that need to be signed. And typically, we get the two signatures needed, and then we need a majority of the board, again, to sign the manifest for our records. We can bring them to board meetings, but in the summer, we don't have that many board meetings. So, and I don't really want to sit on checks. I don't wanna incur late payments. I've talked to other business administrators, and they have the same issues, especially during summer when the boards meet less frequently. And some of them email the board members the check registers so they can at least go through the check registers, because they don't scan them while we invoice, so it takes a lot of time. And then the board members reply back that, okay, that's okay to send out those payments. And I was wondering if that would be... And then, when they come to their meetings, they'll sign the manifest. Some of them do that during the year because some of their boards only meet once a month, you know, twice a month is easier to handle with everything else. But I'm just wondering if we can institute that practice, because again, I just don't like to sit on the checks. I've had, well, just recently had the second signature for some checks that I was holding, you know, so I don't know if we could institute that for the summer in between, because my next meeting is August 24th. If I email you out the check registers, if you have any questions, obviously, look through that, we can give you more information.
I think whatever it takes to get it done, absolutely.
And that's what we'll do, at least for the summer months.
Sure.
I know people are on vacation, which is hard to get everybody in.
I still welcome that seat.
And you can, you're certainly, you're certainly welcome to come in. We're not saying you can't come in.
I can't get them off my desk.
Even now, we have three signatures, we still have to wait till we get the full signature to each filed in the way. I love to have my desk space back, so I can put my monitors back.
Once I am no longer testing positive for COVID, I will stop in, but believe me, you don't want me there right now. Sure. Was that it, Deb, you good?
That's it, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Superintendent's report, Judith?
Okay, so the district was notified that the Bridge Army 175 is closed to school buses. So that information went out to, Woodstock sent it to the SAU, and I also got a report by the state. And so I sent it out to Lincoln and Capitol Memorial Website and whatever. And I also sent it out to the transportation company. So they're where we did, you know, review the bus routes, and we'll be modifying some of them, and so that's not a problem for them. The Aportement Funding Formula Committee meeting is scheduled for August 17th at 6:00 PM in the middle high school library. So that's the most available, next available time for all committee members, so we seem to be all set there. And the task goals, the summer school for the elementary and middle high school for private recovery has begun and is moving along smoothly. Also, the Girls of Summer, Boys of Summer, and we'll be updating us on that as well. A report from Dave Webster to the Lynnwood Oxford Summer School for Middle School, High School for the last four weeks, four days a week, from 8 to 11, and will conclude this week. Mr. Webster offered Middle High School Summer School to 12 students. The students worked on their recovery standards in the following courses: algebra, integrated math, ELA, 9 through 12, French, Biology, Social Studies, and ICT. As of Tuesday this week, all the pre-students have successfully completed their work with high expectations that the pre-students will complete the work and earn their credits by Thursday. And so as of the total time on task for this month, it has been a daily average of five hours a day for the students, so that's going very well. And the past board goals and a copy of the strategic plan are in the packet, so that you can review that. And we could set a goal meeting. Will be scheduled for September, when everyone gets back on track and gets back on schedule. So we'll look at that later. And the rest we can do within the agenda.
Good, thank you, Judith. Principals' report, Mark?
Good evening. Just wanna talk a little bit about what Sherif mentioned. Last time, the flooring in the high school is done. It looks great. I don't know if you knew about that yet, it's looking awesome. Our custodians are working the day shift, and they're doing a really good job of cleaning things back together, cleaning. I just wanna recognize them. And I think Mark is throwing a little celebration on Friday, so glad for that. It's just gonna cook out for him, which is good, they're doing a great job. I'd also like to say that we're still, we're still hoping to get more applicants for job positions. We did have several interviews. We've had interviews where people have declined because they were, they already managed to add a position, or they just wanted to move on and do something different. But we're still trying to fill those positions. Other than that, we're just working on at the beginning of the school year, reviewing a lot more policies. I'm meeting with Jason quite frequently and kind of discussing, you know, like, what are our intentions for this school year, what are our girls look like, how to operate different systems and things like that. But mainly, we're just hoping to get some applicants, particularly prepared professionals. That would be really helpful, really, really helpful, considering we've offered, we've offered a couple of those positions, but, and people have turned to stay. So we're just looking at that. What else? I think a few months ago, we had talked a little bit about using money from the Equipment Trust Fund to gain some more equipment for our weight room. And so I brought a item in which Matt and our PE teachers, Mr. Louts and Mr. Murphy, were kind of looking at. We've kind of talked about adding another machine, which is called a Smith machine. Tammy, I sent you a email, your school email, just of the cover sheet of this, but I can send you the link after we're done.
Okay.
So basically, the machine provides a more updated, modern machine that, with different safety features. Right now, we're looking at using it for two separate PE courses, specifically our sports and after-school weightlifting. The PE courses, we have two strength and conditioning courses that we're doing. One is for males and the other's for females, and we've gotten a really good response to that the last, this last year. The space is a little iffy, but that market plan to renovate some rooms and to acquire some space out of trays or a trace computer storage room where Bart is housed. So that's a pretty easy fix. They're supposed to be doing that this summer, but depending upon when and if this goes. So what we're doing is we're asking for a hearing to get some money out of the Equipment Trust Fund. We said last time roughly it was $5,000, but I think we modified our search, found something a little, a little more reasonable. It costs about $3,400, but it is recommended that you pay an additional $500 to get a professional installation, and that way it doesn't void a warranty. So that's what we're asking for, so the next time we meet at a school board meeting, we'd like to put that on the agenda. And that's all I ask.
Thank you, Mike. Debbie, do you know what is in that trust fund currently?
Not off the top of my head, but there's enough in there. I don't have that spreadsheet.
No, that's fine, I'm just curious, that's fine.
We had talked about it during the budget and kind of allocated that money out of the Equipment Trust Fund.
Do you need a number for the agenda? Like, why just, like, I was just saying, instead, like, listed it for that, trust fund up to like four or five thousand?
I'd say up to five, I'm just gonna add install. Is there any shipping on this? Because it's a big piece, I would assume there's probably some shipping.
Just shipping.
Yeah, because it's not, anyway.
You'll have a final figure prior to setting the agenda for the meeting now. Good. So that'll be prior to the meeting on August 24th. We'll have the hearing prior to that meeting, great, thank you.
Shipping and tax, add that card, so. So there is shipping, okay.
It's such a big piece, I would say.
Great, well, sounds good. Committee reports, were there any committees that met since the last meeting?
No committee reports.
Nobody's met. While we're on, before we move on to policy, though, I'd like to talk about the bus. The price of steel has gone down now to about $40 a ton, it's nothing. So even, even if it was up to a couple hundred, with what the bus weighs, we're only gonna get 1,500, 1,600 bucks for it anyway. I don't wanna sit on it another whole winter if we don't have to, but I don't wanna give it away either. I'd like to throw one more Hail Mary and put it back out to bid one more time and see if we can't get some bites on it somehow. How does the rest of the board feel?
Where, where have we been putting it out?
Well, we did, we did a close thing, but we didn't get it. So we denied it, but at this point, I think we've discussed that it's time, because if we get a low number, we get a low number, but at this point, we're just kind of hanging out with it, so it's time to move on with it. There is no alternative solution. So the first bid we received one time ago just wasn't accepted. At that point in time, we didn't feel that it was necessary.
Worst-case scenario, we sit on another whole winter, and when the price goes back up next spring, we could probably get about $1,500 in scrap. It's the worst-case scenario, so if we put it out to bid and we didn't get anything above that, I think we should give it one more, it's not gonna hurt.
The price we originally had, well, brought the price way back. Wait, I think the last time we brought this to you, it's like $2,500.
Was the minimum bid?
Yeah.
Just try to make the minimum, that 1,500, maybe, but at 2,500, we didn't get any bids.
Yeah, well, last fall was higher, but at that point, the scrap value was 2,500, so I think that's why we decided that. We never actually listed it to 2,500.
No, no, we just said it as a whole bid.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think I'd put a minimum on there, or I'd just let it go and see what happens. And, and we would just know, you know, when the bids, hopefully, they come flying in, but anything less than 1,500, we just don't accept it.
Where do we put that bid out to? No, obviously, it's not on Facebook, but where do you guys, is there a site?
Well, we'll put it out in our regular advertising channels, but we'll also send it to transportation companies, other schools.
It can go on like the Facebook page too. I mean, we might as well get it out there. There might be somebody that wants to build a camper or something. I mean, it won't hurt to post it.
Room down on the hampon for it, so.
Oh, thanks for that, Joe. I think we need another bus down there, definitely.
We'll send it up to Lou, if experience can use it.
Yeah, you never know.
So we agree, we're gonna put it out one more time and hope for the best?
Four weeks from another meeting. If I wanna do it, it's a week before the next meeting is the deadline.
Yeah, or the Monday before, whatever. I mean, we could put it on the agenda and then just put the deadline for the Friday before or something. Great, thank you for that. We'll move on to policies. Does anybody have any comments or questions about the policies up for approval? There being none, I will make the motion to approve Policies ACE-E, ACE, AD, AE, BEDH, BIE, EE, AA, FF, GBCD, GCEB, GDB-R, IF-R, IHBCA, IJOC, IKF, IKL, IMBC, IMDA, IMG, JBAA-R2, JICA-R, JICL-R, JI, I'm sorry, JLCJ, KB, KB-R, and KL. Do I have a second? Thank you, Brian, any discussion? All those in favor, Joe? Ashley? Brian? And I am an I as well.
Thank you to the balls, you guys are killing it.
And then I will also make a motion to withdraw Policies AE, EHBR, JBAB, JFG, and LG. Do I have a second? Thank you, any discussion? All those in favor, Joe? Ashley? Brian? I am an I as well. Oh, good, that's out of the way. Business requiring board action. With staff nominations, recommendations, and resignations, I need to ask the board to give Judith permission to conduct a phone poll. The interviews are still ongoing, and she's not prepared to bring anybody to us at this time, however, she will be shortly, hopefully. And our next meeting is until August 24th, so it doesn't leave a whole lot of time to prepare for the school year if they've already started their in-service days at that point. So we need to give Judith permission to conduct a phone poll, and then at the August 24th meeting, anything that was discussed at that phone poll, you know, including any nominations and approvals, et cetera, will be reiterated at the August 24th meeting so that it is in the minutes for transparency. Does everybody agree with that, Joe? Brian? Ashley? And I agree as well. Does that do it for you, Judith, as far as that is concerned? Is that good for you?
That'll move, that'll make it very good, thank you.
Perfect. So there are no nominations at this time, correct? Okay. The Primate cap agreement, everybody had that in their packet, did they read it? It's, to me, it's pretty much a no-brainer. Primate wants us to enter into, I believe it's a three-year contract. In that three-year contract, they would cap any increases at 9%. Of course, if it's lower than that, it would be lower, but it won't go above the 9%. But we need to agree to a three-year contract for July 1st, 2023, through July 30th of '24, and July 20, July 1st of '24 through June 30th of '25, and July 20, July 1st of '25 through June 30th of '26. Any discussion?
I just have one comment. There's two on two, we're part of. Property liability, that's the 9% increase, and then there's workers' comp, so there's two agreements in there. So workers' comp is up to 10%, and again, if like 10%, it just gives us budgetary assurance through June 30th, 2026.
Perfect. That was with those same dates. So with the property liability with the cap at 9% for a three-year contract, I will entertain a motion to hereby accept the offer of the New Hampshire Public Risk Management Exchange, Primate, to enter into this property and liability contribution assurance program cap as of the date of adoption of this resolution, and to be contractually bound to all of the terms and conditions of Primate's Risk Management Pool membership during the term of the Property and Liability Contribution Assurance Program cap, the coverage provided by Primate in each year of membership shall be as then set forth in the coverage documents of Primate. Anybody wanna move that motion? Thank you, Joe, second, anyone? Brian, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, Joe? Ashley? Brian? I am an I as well. And then, for the workers' comp part of it with a 10% cap, I will entertain a motion to hereby accept the offer of the New Hampshire Public Risk Management Exchange, Primate, to enter into its Workers' Compensation Contribution Assurance Program cap as of the date of the adoption of this resolution, and to be contractually bound to all of the terms and conditions of Primate's Risk Management Pool membership during the term of the Workers' Compensation Contribution Assurance Program cap, the coverage provided by Primate in each year of membership shall be as then set forth in the coverage documents of Primate. Thank you, Joe? Thank you, Ashley, any discussion? All those in favor, Joe? Ashley? Brian? I am an I as well. Do you need more than that, Deb, or does that cover you with that? Perfect. Find my agenda here. Student handbook, do we need to talk about that anymore? Or are we good?
Good.
Okay. We talked about the school bus sale. The Department of Education Indoor Air Quality Survey, that was also in our packet.
Tammy, can we have a vote?
I'm gonna make a motion to accept the Lynnwood Public School handbook as presented.
Oh, perfect. Thank you, do we have a second? Thank you, Joe, any discussion? Great, all in favor, Joe? Brian? Ashley? I am an I as well, thank you for that.
Thank you, Jared.
Now, the indoor air quality survey, Judith, do you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, the, that's just the, the one that goes over the...
Is that something you have to, you have to do this, fill this out yearly, is that right?
We fill this out annually, and it goes back to the DOE, and we just have to give a copy to the board so that they...
Yeah, it's just a...
Just informational.
Perfect, excellent, thank you for that.
And the next one is the school fire and life safety, and that's the one, Tammy, if you remember, you brought up earlier in the year. Right, that is due in December, and as soon as that gets done and completed by the Town of Lincoln Safety Officer, then we will give a copy to the board on that as well.
Perfect, thank you.
First one's due in like June, something like that.
Yeah, that one's already in.
Great. Was there any COVID-19 update?
Tammy has it.
Yeah, exactly. I don't recommend it. Esra funds, anything there, Deb? Nope, okay. Public participation, do we have any students in the room? I do see Heather there, though. Hi, Heather.
Here I am. I wanted to share that Girls of Summer has had a great summer. We have our overnight next week, where we're gonna go, we're gonna do the Franconia Ridge Trail. We haven't had an overnight in the last two summers due to COVID, so we're really excited. We had a very diverse group of girls, more inexperienced hikers than we've had in the past, and they've led it really well. Yesterday, we hiked Musselot with the Boys of Summer. So Erin and Sean, we've done that for the last seven years, we've done one hike with them, and it's always a really quirky group of kids, for whatever reason, on that particular day, it's, it's awesome. And Sean, and Erin, and Rebecca, and I hiked with them. And Musselot, it's getting taller, I feel like I'm gonna hike that. But we brought them all home, and they, they have, they've been great. And then the only other thing I wanna share is that we got a date today for our freshman orientation, and any new students who join Lincoln, we're gonna do a place for orientation during our in-service week. So that went really well last year, and I think it's important that we do things like that for our, you know, it's the same building, still different.
Great. Thank you, Heather. Is there any community members in the room? No. We do have one online, do we allow comment online or not? We don't have one online anymore, never mind. Is there anything else? Do we cover everything?
Yes.
We're good? Awesome, well, and we don't have, we don't need a non-public? Fantastic, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Second?
Thank you, Brian, thank you, Joe. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Joe. All in favor? Paul, Joe?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Ashley? I am an aye as well. Thank you all.